Capron Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Do we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Check the L H, please. Anybody that's here for this proclamation, please stand up if you would, and we'll read this. You guys want to come up here, come on up here. Come on up.
Hi.
Who we got is... Jessica, can you snap a picture if they want a picture for them? Anybody want a picture, we'll get you... Jessica can snap a picture for you. You're going to take the picture? Okay, alright. I guess they got it, Jessica. We've got a proclamation today that we've never had this large a group for a proclamation. Thanks for coming. We'll get it done in nine, because I know you don't really want to stay for the whole council meetings. Whereas the first Friday in June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas in January 2013, Hadeo Pendleton was tragically shot and killed by gang members in Chicago. To help honor Hadeo, a national coalition of organizations has designated the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The idea was inspired by Hadeo's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. And whereas by wearing orange on June 7, 2019, Americans can join this campaign to help raise awareness and renew our commitment to reduce gun violence. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim June 7, 2019 Gun Violence Awareness Day in Sioux City, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to support local efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Go ahead and say a few words if you would.
I just wanted to thank the mayor and the folks that work with him for taking a look at our proclamation. And unfortunately, we're here because just a few days ago, we had another mass shooting in Virginia Beach, and it was in like a municipality like this where there were hard-working folks just like you, just going through their normal days, trying to have a great day at work. And unfortunately, we have to do things like this because we have to recognize that, you know, I'm glad to be able to raise awareness to this issue, but the only reason I'm doing it is because there isn't enough being done right now. And we all need to work together as a community to help keep everyone safe. So I thank you all for being here. I thank all of you. We have some great March For Our Lives kids. We have some great local supporters here too. And just to, you know, keep this in mind and work together, do everything we can to stop gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go to interviews at the airport. Board of Trustees, Richard Brown Jr., please come forward. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve on the airport. Board of Trustees.
Thank you for the invitation. I'm Richard Brown Jr. I am a semi-retired physician here in the community of Metropolitan Sioux City, Iowa. I've been here in the community approximately 27 years. And over that period of time, have observed our airport and have really had broken heart at times at the service that we get. I am very appreciative of our airport and I love our little airport. And one of my passions for many years has been travel. I've done that since I was a child. And my passions have also been planes and trains. That being said, I've had an interest in aviation for many years. I enjoy reading. And I had an interest in seeing what way I can contribute to the community and possibly contribute to the airport board with diversity of thinking, an ability to look at data, but sort of put it in good perspective. I'm fairly easy with decision-making and try to be fairly fair with decision-making and broad-minded as well. And I really believe that with continuing development of SUX, that what we can do is provide an environment that's going to certainly be an increase in making our area conducive to meetings, to tourism, to broadening the awareness of our airport. I would love to see that SUX becomes the premier or the desired airport that people would want to fly out of. It certainly is very close here. And unfortunately, I see many people always wanting to fly out of the other airports. And I recognize that's because of the diversity and the reliability and the schedules that are certainly flexible enough. Therefore, I'd like to see us develop that as well and like to be a part of that.
Questions?
Certainly appreciate your taking the time to make the application, Dr. Brown. Being a frequent flyer, you have seen a lot of airports.
I've seen many airports.
And can do some comparisons and find out what's good and what isn't so good. But thank you for making the application.
Yeah, I do really appreciate it. You have an impressive resume and an impressive application. I appreciate people that take the time to thoroughly fill that out. I will say, candid with you, that I do wish more successful people such as yourself with such a great resume, lived on this side of the border and were applying as well. I think that's something that I will continue to struggle with. I understand we're a region, but sometimes I think that that's something we have to address as well. But I do appreciate the application.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Civil Rights Commission Kenneth Tidwell Jr.
Yeah, tell you what, big day.
Might be a doctor too, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you are, okay.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this afternoon. I'm Ken Tidwell Jr. I am currently employed at Western Iowa Tech after serving for 21 years in the United States Air Force via active duty, Air Force Reserves, and then the National Guard here at the 185th. I've lived in Sioux City now for 10 years and looking at this opportunity to continue to serve after my retirement in the military. I think civil service is a pretty amazing opportunity there to support our amazing public servants, the city and the community. I think I bring to the Civil Service Commission an awareness of fairness in the overall approach to what we do in order to provide city services, and I'm specifically thinking of police and fire, but others as well. And how do we honor the taxpayers' dollar in order to provide the services in a way that is fair to our employees? I think the opportunity to serve the city is just a great chance for me to continue to serve in a little different, more local capacity than I've had the opportunity in the past two decades. And we've lived here for 10 years and have really enjoyed living here. It's the longest place I've had the opportunity to live as an adult. My two children, two older children graduated from East High School, so that, once that started happening, people were like, okay, now you're real Sioux Cityans and you're part of us now. So we enjoy it here and look forward to the opportunity to serve.
Questions?
Appreciate the application. Again, no doubt. I see Kendra back there too. I'm like, gosh, was Dan speaking at a Western Iowa Tech function and just, you know, recruiting people for these or?
I don't, I don't... How did you come across?
How did you hear about it?
Hear about me?
Oh, it said in his application.
Oh, did it?
Tell him, but I can't re...
I didn't catch it either.
Didn't somebody tell you about the commission?
I've heard about the commission for a long time and then Dr. Cindy Hansen had talked to me specifically about it here recently. I've kept my eye open on a couple boards and commissions. Once I got into retirement, kind of say, you know, is this the opportunity? And it seemed like this is the right fit for the right time.
You wouldn't have known where Sioux City was if it wasn't for Heartland Baptist Church.
Amen.
There you go. He filled a pulpit years ago.
2004. I made the drive every weekend from Omaha before we shipped out to Japan for the next two years.
Terrific. Thank you for applying.
Yeah, this commission in particular takes a lot of time and work, and it's very important. It's, all the commissions have important work, but I mean, this is really, you know the time commitment that you're making.
Yes, sir.
And that's a good thing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a good afternoon.
Kendra, and I hope I don't blow your last name too bad, Bergensky?
Bergensky, yeah.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Human Rights Commission.
Hello. Thank you for seeing me today and considering me for a seat on this board. My name is Kendra Bergensky. I am the Director of Arts and Science at Western Iowa Tech. I've worked at Western Iowa Tech for nearly 20 years in four different roles, and those positions have connected me with students from all over our community. And I feel that I've spent a lot of time getting to know a lot of people from a lot of different areas and a lot of different backgrounds and things like that. To me, a seat on a board like this is not really, it's just an extension of my life's work, really. You know, at Western Iowa Tech, we're in the business of helping students to change their lives. The classrooms and what we do there is to give every chance and every student an equal chance to do that, to make changes to their lives. Not all students come to us with the same level of preparation or the same level of advantage, but they all have the same opportunity to make their lives better. And that's really what we do and what I am all about. I've been involved with several initiatives over the years. We've put two new things into place at the college in the last year that are specifically designed to address some equity-type issues. This is truly a passion of my heart and who I am. You know, diversity and inclusion are kind of a personal credo of mine. I grew up in truly what I would consider to be a made family. If you looked at a photo from a family reunion, you would not be able to figure out who belongs where because we are a total mix of just about everything you can imagine. We have gay people and straight people and black people and white people and native people and Hispanic people. I have a cousin I'm not sure we're actually even related to. We just picked him up along the way somewhere. This is truly who I am and what's important to me. You know, when I was younger, it made me angry. It upset me to watch my family be affected by systematic things that get in the way. And as I grew and as I began to study those things, it truly became a passion for me. And this is who I am and what I do every day in my life is try to make things more equal so everybody has a chance to improve their lives.
What would you hope to accomplish as a member of the Human Rights Commission?
That's a great question because, you know, the ultimate answer is world peace, like everybody to be perfect and get along. Obviously, there are lots of issues and they're very complicated issues. The intersections of our community are really complicated. I think there's a lot of room to do things that can actually help this community really improve. Last fall, I was part of a, I was at a conference and I spoke with the gentleman who is on the Human Rights Commission in Des Moines. You know, I actually called, the whole reason I'm here today is because I called Karen Mackey because I was working on a project that we're trying to get going with students, and then I saw that there was a seat open and now here I am. You know, I think that there are lots of opportunities, but I think that when we talk about difficult issues like this, it's about finding the right time and the right place to address those things. And that's part of...
Well, we're glad you're here and thank you for applying.
I appreciate the time. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for applying.
Have a great afternoon.
You too.
You too.
Library Board of Trustees, Todd Stanley.
He's on the board already. Todd's reapplying, just so you know.
I was just going to say that.
Tell us why you want to keep serving, Todd.
Alright, well, thank you. I've been on the board nearly three years now, and currently I'm the President of the Board of Trustees as well. And I think we've done a lot of good here in the Sioux City community. We've just completed that project and it's reopening today, the Morningside Library Branch. And we're really proud of what we've done over there. And I want to continue to have a direct influence on the direction of the library system in the Sioux City community here. And so I'm asking for an additional term.
Any questions?
You did a real nice job representing the library board in your interviews.
Oh, thank you.
On the Morningside Branch Library. Yeah, you did a real good job representing us, so thank you for that. And thanks for reapplying.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the City of Sioux City Strategic Plan Update.
I'm Jessica Johnson. I'm at the City Manager's Office, and I'm here to present a proposed updated strategic plan for the City of Sioux City for 2019 to 2021. I began this update process by meeting with a strategic plan committee that included Bob Padmore and Ann Westra from the City Manager's Office, Helen Rigdon from the library, Rex Mueller from the Police Department, Amy Thule from our Housing Authority, and Renee Billings from our Economic Development Department. I also met with directors and staff from other departments to discuss goals and priorities. As a group, we reviewed the current strategic plan. We also surveyed city staff, council members, and members of the business community. We reviewed results from the work being done on the comprehensive plan and those survey results from members of the community. And from all that information, we evaluated the strengths and weaknesses of our community, the positive and negative influences on our city, what our priorities and goals should be. We found that our current plan already focused on a majority of the community's main priorities and what we were seeing from the surveys, but we needed to fine-tune it, update it, and reorganize it. We also made some additions and created a new focus area. Our municipal responsibilities and commitment to citizens include quality of life, health and safety, infrastructure, customer service, and economic opportunity. Under those, we have four strategic focus areas: to grow Sioux City, promote Sioux City, enhance connectivity with citizens and businesses, and further community health, safety, and well-being. And I will briefly go over those four. The first, grow Sioux City, has priorities that include driving economic growth, encouraging innovation and entrepreneurship, business development, job creation, revitalizing our neighborhoods, historic preservation, developing critical mass downtown, and investing in our city's infrastructure. The second...
Go back to that page. I want to know where you got that picture of Barclay asphalt doing a overlay. Was that part of the project we just bid or?
I'm not 100% sure. I can find out and help me get together all the images.
We haven't done any overlays for so long until this year. I was curious where you got the picture.
I can find out and let you know. The second, promote Sioux City, includes beautification, cultural development initiatives, maintaining our cultural centers, improving our tourism outreach, showcasing Sioux City as a place for businesses to start and grow, broaden and celebrate our diversity as a community, and also market our city's assets to our residents and really educate them on everything that we are doing as a city and what we do have available for them. The third is to enhance connectivity with citizens and businesses, which includes encouraging resident engagement, partnering with local businesses and educational institutions, workforce development and recruitment, empowering our young professionals and getting them to stay here, enhancing our council and staff engagement with the public, investing in community outreach, promoting volunteerism in our organization as a community as a whole, and growing our youth involvement. And the fourth and final is to further community health, safety, and well-being, which includes supporting public safety services to maintain pace with our city's growth, expanded recreational opportunities, enhance public spaces and expand our green spaces, support efforts to reduce homelessness, restore, protect, and enhance our natural resources, promoting recycling and waste reduction, providing safe, affordable drinking water, and operating and maintaining water and wastewater treatments to serve our industrial, residential, and commercial community. That was kind of quick, and as you can see...
Well, you guys did this, fortunately without council input probably, but...
I surveyed you.
Pardon me?
We did provide surveys and I got responses from four out of five.
Were you trying to tell me I didn't?
No, I'm just saying.
I did it, but anyway.
Yes.
It always bothers me, and I know that I'm going to be, this is going to be taken wrong, but it really bothers me that we make an effort to say we want to engage young people and we want to engage young kids, when reality is we ought to make sure we engage older people who have been here for a long time because the last thing we want them to do is move somewhere else too. We want them to, even if they want to move out of their house, we want to make sure we have townhouses and good retirement-type settings for them. And I don't know why that isn't part of our strategic plan, quite frankly. That bothers me that it isn't because it's like, we only care, I know it's important for you, but at my age, I'm more concerned about old people than I am young people.
I don't understand.
Right. And that should be, that to me should be part of our connectivity as well.
Well, we can definitely take a look at adding it, and I can talk with the Senior Advisory Committee on what they'd like to see added.
Yeah.
We'll try to do better. Alex and I.
Alright. Other questions for Jessica?
Jessica, I noticed 37 checkmarks. What goes forward from here? Who's designated to be responsible to see that these things happen or continue to happen?
Well, as you can, each individual strategic focus area is, has goals that involve multiple city departments.
Yes.
So it's one of those things where I'm doing my quarterly updates, I'm reaching out to these departments that are responsible for these things, saying, what have you done? What can you tell me that I can take to council when I do my quarterly update? What have you been doing? Are you achieving this? Are we not? What do you need?
So their goal, the individual department's goals, would be to figure out what they need to do or...
What are they doing in support of that? Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And that's what you'll report back?
Yes, so when it comes to reducing the recycle, encouraging recycling or reducing waste, I would talk to Melissa Campbell in Environmental Services and see what she's doing, what she needs help with and things like that. The water and wastewater, talk to Mark in Utilities about what they're doing. Recreational stuff, talk to Matt.
So how do we determine how successful we've been at the end of this three-year period?
So, well, and if I can hop in, that was actually the point that I was going to make or suggest.
More measurable.
Right on target with it was just if we could really focus on some measurables of some of these, that's what I would like. And I hope the smile is because you agree, is I was just thinking that some of those points would be great if we could measure them. You know, how many jobs did we add? I'm a big person of trying to watch population. I want to make sure that we start to increase our population and make sure that we're attracting more people than we're losing or that are moving, things like that. Or take recycling as a measure, right? Like, do we have more receptacles in all of our city offices than we had last year? Like, that's a win. You know, do we have all of them out in downtown? That's a win. Those are measurables. And I think to Pete's point, then we can say, under these checkmarks, we made sure that we pushed the needle.
Yep.
That's what I was thinking, is I was reading through them and I agree with all your points. I think the mayor makes a good point of making sure, because I hear a lot about senior living, knowing having more adequate senior housing. And so it's like if we can measure some of those things about the number of units available or the number of rented spaces downtown or things like that, I mean, you can really but just maybe prioritizing some of those and saying, here's the measurable of where we're going to want to see growth. And then you can really hold them accountable rather than maybe calling the department and saying, well, this is the goal. What are you going to do to achieve it? Say, these are the ways that we're going to measure it. Make sure that you're meeting these or exceeding them, or if you have other suggestions, you know, then they can put that forward.
Yeah, well, we can update this.
Yeah. No, I think, I thought that was great. I'm just saying for the next, you know, for measuring it, just then, then the next time you do come, you can say, here's where the measurements are. I thought the points were great.
Okay.
Well, you mentioned our quarterly reports updating, and that ties in with the strategic plan, the quarterly reports that you've been giving.
Yes.
Now whether it's measurable or not, we can get, we can get in...
Yeah, we can always change the way the updates are presented as well.
But one of the things that I think I mentioned when I responded to your request was maybe, I don't want to get to the point where we bite off too much, where you have 37 goals or 37 different, and then at the end of it, we did maybe 50% of them. And I want to make sure that we're actually doing the things we're going to, we're saying we're going to do and make sure that they're feasible to do. And maybe to your point, Alex, to prioritize, you know, what we really want to see happen in the long run. I mean, it'd be ideal to see all of these things happen over three-year period of time, but in reality, I've been through a number of strategic plans where we're lucky to get half of them. And I just don't want us to bite off too much and look like we're not capable of doing those things. I think we are, but as long as it's being monitored, but is there any value to prioritizing?
Councilmember Gretkin, if you recall, I didn't know what strategic plan you're referring to, it was almost 100 pages long. We, as you'll notice, we took a very, this is about five years ago, we culled it quite a bit. You'll notice that the strategic plan goals are more of general of nature. They're not specific. They allow for creativity, they allow for freedom. What we have identified as a goal right now might morph over time into something else. I don't think there's anything on that list that can't be addressed and accomplished. Some will be more challenging than others. I don't know that any need to be prioritized, I think.
But the other side of the coin is when you had 112 items or whatever it was, they were pretty specific, so you did know if you accomplished something where this is...
But as a result, that's why we failed 80% of the time.
I like the Bowery cover, but I don't want to be the Bowery that we don't...
But as long as...
We don't set some specific measurable goals. I agree with them.
I think a good balance is achievable. I think to Bob's point, that as long as you're saying this is a general and use, and be creative of how you do that, you know what I mean? If you're going to promote Sioux City, maybe your department doesn't have a Facebook page and has no time to do that, but you sent two stories on to Ann and Ann shared it with the page. I mean, that's just being creative and you're meeting that promote Sioux City type of thing, you know what I mean? Or what your, what your department is doing to volunteer in the community. Yeah, I think measurables would be great, but I think the creativity of the department, to Bob's point...
I think it's a combination of both.
It's an equal balance, yeah. You have a balance.
So department heads have been privileged with all of this information? They know what will be expected?
I've talked to, I think, every department that would cover these things, yeah. And not all of them are new. I mean, a lot, some of them were from the old one, we just fine-tuned.
Thank you.
What kind of, what kind of public input are we going to ask for on this, for the strategic plan?
After, well...
Where does this go next? I mean, the public should look at this.
Well, we would promote, yes, I mean, we would publish it on our website and we would share it on social media.
And we expect some feedback from the public as well then, from our...
We could ask for that, yes.
Just on the website too?
I would ask for...
It's not now, no.
But are we inviting comments from the citizens?
Yes.
About what our strategic plan reads, how it reads, and whether we could make improvements upon it?
Yeah, we could.
I'd like to, I'd like to know what the citizens have...
And we did a ton of that with the comprehensive plan. You know what I mean? We pushed that hard and that's where some of this came from, was gleaned from. But yeah...
Yeah, because we didn't want to start over.
You can always be asking for more, yeah, because there, I mean, there are thousands, right? Yeah, quite a few thousand replies.
Yeah, so we kind of used that information rather than do surveys, yeah.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to the regular agenda. We'll start with the consent agenda, which today is 14th, 14th, sorry, 17L. Consider these items passed unanimously unless a council member asks for a separate roll call vote. If you want to speak on an item, please come to the podium. As I read that item, state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns and state your name and address before you speak. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Four is a reading of the City Council minutes of May 20, 2019. Five is a resolution authorizing the Police Department to apply for a grant for this body. Six is a resolution scheduling a hearing on a $300 civil penalty against 75 pronto express 1875 North for violation of the cigarette laws. Seven is a resolution rejecting all bids on the Floyd Boulevard sanitary interceptor emergency repair motion requesting to defer this item to June 10, 2019. And why is that? Why are we deferring?
I can address that. In our meeting with contractors last week, Dave Carney and I, in discussion with the low bidder or the only bidder, we discussed with them the nature of the emergency that's currently on at the Floyd project and asked if they would be willing to delay rejection of the bids, should it be determined that this work would actually have to be done as originally specced.
Okay, but my understanding was that they bid, they, the grounds were for rejecting their bids because they didn't do the bid form right.
That was turned, that was found to be incorrect.
This whole thing has become a comedy of errors.
It has been.
It, it has been. Uh, yeah, I was given that information and that, that was, they included the wrong bid form, but since they did their own bid form, they had included all the items and they just signed the incorrect bid form. So it's, it's a, something we could overlook. Their, their, their self-made tabulation included all the bid items.
Tell me again, I'm sorry, I just, I'm, I'm not tracking that for the first explanation.
Uh, later on the agenda, you'll see a bid for time and materials with KP. KP at this point is doing exploratory digging to find if we can find the extent of the problem. If it should be determined that the entire pipe would need to be replaced as was specced in, in what's being considered for rejection. The contractor has, is willing to do that work up until the time that the bid expires. The bid expires June fourteenth, so we're asking that it be with deferred one week until we get a better idea of the extent of the work that needs to be done.
On the item under KP.
Mm-hmm.
Talk about that just for a minute. So all they're going to do is dig the hole.
Yeah, they're doing time and materials work. Now, if it determines that it's just, and maybe Dave can answer better than myself. If it's just doing some spot repairs, they would continue to do work. But if they were to dig the hole and find out that the entire line would need to be replaced, we would then terminate KP and go forward with the bid as bid by Sioux City Engineering.
Exactly. We're looking to have them dig down, because we can't get into both ends of the pipe. So we're gonna look and see if it's completely plugged or is it just plugged in these two ends?
Here, here's the trouble, I appreciate the explanation. The trouble I'm wrestling with is, is it objective? How, how do you know what, when you say it might be spot repairing, couldn't that be a substantial bill that you'd want bid out?
Yeah, that nothing prevent, nothing prevents us from ultimately rejecting this bid and having to bid out something else. But if they got down and determined that the best course of action would be to replace that entire pipe, that's what was specced out and is, is here right now.
But if KP gets down there and decides they could make some quick fixes, how, why wouldn't you have to bid that?
I think that would be a determination by engineering and the level of repair that would be needed.
They, it would be to, to pull them off and rebid at that point would probably be, depending on how big of the spot repair is.
We're hoping that we can actually make a couple of spot repairs to get the flow going and then we can get rid of the bypass pumping.
So whose big backhoe is that out there that was digging yesterday?
That's our, that was our rental backhoe.
Who's operating it?
Mercino was working on that one. They were, they were, they used it to relocate the bypass pumping lines. And while they were there, they were just cleaning up the site where their bite, or their boost, their bypass pumps were.
And you, the city attorney, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put her on the spot here, is fine with you renting a piece of equipment and having a contractor run it?
Governor O'Brien, Tilly Superintendent.
Are you fine with that?
We had no choice because they had to be able to pull their pumps. And to me.
Well, if you're running the machine, why are we not putting our own operator on it?
Well, because we're not there twenty-four seven.
But John.
We're not there twenty-four seven.
Wait.
I wasn't aware of that till after the fact that they did that. I just found out it happened.
They, they just got on the machine, started running it?
They were cleaning up their site. I didn't realize that's what they were doing out there.
I know the rest are, are more patient than I am. But this has become a complete fiasco by anybody's measurement. I don't care who you are. We don't, I, I just. That's a very expensive piece of equipment that if that guy doesn't know what he's doing operating it, we have huge, huge liability. I don't care personally, this is by not, the rest of them speak for themselves. I don't care if you had to bring a guy in and pay him overtime.
I didn't realize that happened till.
Well. Then you know what? There, then maybe they're the wrong contractor that we're gonna vote on here today later on then. If they're just using our equipment and they're not telling you, there's something really wrong going on here.
I'll say more about that contractor.
Dave, just really oversimplify this for me, just to make it really easy. So the bid we received that will, hopefully will defer to June tenth, because I, I can support that, okay? But we're having another contractor do the time and materials to just see if that's in fact what the problem is, that this contractor that made the bid trying to determine, that's what we're trying to determine. The only thing I'm asking you is, can, can we get a report back when they get down there, find out what it is before?
Yes.
Anything else is done, whether it's.
Absolutely.
A, a quick repair, spot repair, whatever you want. I'm probably using the wrong terminology, but you know what?
No, that's right terminology, I guess.
If it's a smaller deal than what the.
We'll make sure that you guys are, as soon as we're in the know, that you guys are in the know.
Well, and then to the mayor's point, and it sounds like to John's point, then are we concerned with them continuing to go on to do this if they're gonna?
Well, this grid should be out today.
This is, this is, Mercino's a separate contractor who's doing the bypass pumping.
But you should be concerned because the hole that, that KP has out there is not nearly big enough to do what they're telling you they're gonna be doing. So he, he's gonna have to rent his own hole, a lot more than what he told you, because he can't even rent that hole for what he told you wanted today without an operator. Right? So what we were told is gonna cost a lot more money than what, than what we were told.
Well, he's got his price in there. I, I, I wouldn't think he.
But that, that machine is not big enough to do what you're telling us it has to be done. You've got to over excavate the hole.
His machine's not there yet.
There's a little one out there that's here.
No, no, KP's machine is not there yet.
Still not big enough to do what you're telling us he's gonna do. Not big enough to do the pipe and everything else that you're gonna have.
His personal machine?
Yeah.
Uh, he said he had a three thirty.
Then why did he ask if he could rent the one you're using?
Because he wanted to use two. Two, one, uh, he said he would, he would rent that, take over rental for it if we wanted two machines there. The second machine actually moving the dirt away from the hole while his machine was digging it up.
His machine's as big as that Kubota or that, is that a Kubota that's out? Not a Kubota, it's a.
Matu?
No, Komatsu. His machine's as big as that Komatsu? No.
No, I don't know what he, I don't know what the Komatsu is. I, I haven't seen that one. What size is it?
His machine's not that big.
A three eighty?
He's got like a two fifty or whatever. It's like, two, it's like.
They're a smaller mid-range, I think, what he has.
Right. So you're gonna put that down in a hole. No, I'm not gonna get it, you guys. No, I, I want to try to understand this. Are you saying the hole wouldn't be big enough? He's gotta dig this way down first.
Yeah, it's, it's over twenty feet deep. It's about twenty-three.
He's putting his machine in that, then he's gonna have to excavate, then he's gonna have to excavate from that point. And so then they're gonna have to make that hole pretty wide, because if you don't, you've got to shore that thing. We don't have the shoring for.
No, he's, he's got shoring coming. He's rented it.
You strip twelve foot from the top, it makes it an eight-foot hole, which is a ten-foot shoring would be.
But I don't know how you can get the width to do what you guys are saying you can do up against the railroad tracks. I just don't see how that can be possibly done, because it's supposed to be like, according to what I've been told by a contractor, it's supposed to be like sixty feet wide at the top.
If you dug straight down twenty-one foot, if you stripped the top off, it'd put you at the, probably within a foot of the railroad bottom ditch would leave you at about nine foot. So that ditch won't be there anymore. To do it correctly, you'd have to strip all that dirt off. And that'd leave you an eight to nine-foot hole to dig, which would be OSHA compliant. You wouldn't be sixty foot across.
And that's OSHA compliant to have a machine down in that hole in case it caves off? That's.
You'd have to slope the banks.
Mm-hmm.
So at the bottom of the ditch, you'd be flat and then you'd have the railroad track. On the other side, you'd have your spacing to be able to get equipment alongside of.
With a building right there now.
The building is seventeen feet away in that location and that's why he's getting the shoring for.
And we're doing all this to find out if the problem is severe is what the bid contractor had indicated. Yes. Although the bid contractor came in where he came in, because number one, they didn't have boring, so they don't know what the water table is. Number two, they didn't know how many feet they were gonna dig. And so they bid shoring at like two hundred thousand dollars worth of rental, because they didn't know, maybe just to spot, they're bidding for the whole nine hundred foot replacement. And there's a lot of reasons they bid what they bid, because everything that was bid was incidental. So they had to bid that in.
In case of.
And then the scope changes and they think, well, maybe we only have two plugs, maybe it's full. They don't know, they don't know and that's in that, they, that's not their fault. They don't know. But the reality is the contractor bid all that stuff because they didn't know what the scope of the job was. I mean, how do you, how do you go out and expect them to go forty, fifty feet deep and not even know where the water table is with the river this high? So they all bid de-watering, thinking they were gonna have to de-water the hole besides. Which these guys could end up doing too, if that river stays where it's at.
Christie, how are you, Tilly, your worker, twenty-four six Myrtle? We dug down twelve feet, we hit groundwater, storm line's gonna have to come out. MCI fiber is in the ditch line, right in the ditch line of the, there. So you take the storm out, you get the water in the ditch line, you get MCI fiber right next to it. So sloping it's gonna be real crap.
It's not gonna be pretty. I mean, I'm not gonna lie, it's not gonna be pretty no matter who does it.
And I had a four ninety, when we got told we were gonna do it, I had a four ninety excavator coming from Minnesota and we got told KP was gonna do it. So we stopped the excavator, because the three fifty wasn't gonna be big enough for what we needed.
Scary job, the way we're doing it, but. So has he got the insurance if he clips that MCI line? Because it's probably a major line, I'm guessing.
He's insurance, I don't know if he.
Standard insurance was, I believe, what I reviewed, which is the million of general liability auto, um, up to three.
And we don't have to have a railroad right of way? Even being in their ditch?
We're not, we're just on the outside of theirs.
Is that like a hundred foot right of way?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty from the center of the track.
Fifty on each side, okay. But you just said you're gonna fill their ditch right next to it.
You're gonna be right on the ditch line. The ditch is here, their right of way is right here. You're gonna be literally right on the edge of it.
That ditch isn't, it's not fifty feet away.
Twenty-five foot, if from the center line, twenty-five, it puts it right on the edge of that ditch.
Oh, so it's all fifty foot total right of way?
I thought it was twenty-five either way, the railroad tracks, is what I was told for flaggers.
Well, that's for flaggers, but they're right of way.
Right of way, they have signs right there, it's right on the edge. They have their right of way pretty well.
We had to have flaggers when we were digging there the other day.
We were right on the edge though.
Who flagged it?
Um, UP came and flagged it, but they said from now on, you got to, they gotta hire a contractor, it takes ten days to get a contractor in place with the flag. They won't have their own guys' flag anymore.
No, UP doesn't do their own flagging anymore, it has to be contracted out, which we're gonna talk on Wednesday about, because ten days is unacceptable if we do have an emergency.
Look, I, John and Dave and Gordon, I, I know we're in a public forum, but I need to have you help me get the right decision here. And I, even knowing what you know now and what we've discovered, is this, I mean, is that still the way?
I know we have, I know we have four blockages that we can't get through. I know the first fifty or sixty foot of pipe from manhole A to manhole B has no top in it. I know coming the other way from manhole B to A, I can make it fifty-three foot and I hit a blockage. We tried multiple times. On one of the attempts, we pushed the pipe through, jet hose through seven hundred and thirty foot. There's four hundred and eighty foot between manhole sections. Pipe, the hose went somewhere. Could have coiled in the pipe, could have went outside the pipe, but I know I can't get through it. From manhole to B to C, I can make it fifteen foot in the one side. From C to B, I can make it five foot. The material in the line's too heavy to suck out with a camel. I can't get through it with our equipment. Something has to give. If we can do a point repair, dig down and get something through to clean the line, it could solve a lot of issues real quick, like what we attempted to do to begin with. Because if you can see what's wrong with the pipe, you can either line it, spot repairs, there's options without digging it up.
You can't televise it right now and see the.
Too full. We can't get a camera truck through it and they're.
Full of what?
Debris. Are, to be able to clean the line out, you have to be able to put a jet hose through the line.
Right, I understand.
I can't get the jet line through it. We're hitting something solid.
Get a camera through it either.
When you can't get a jet line through it, you can't get a camera through it. The only reason why we know that first sixty foot has no top is because when they were doing their bypass pumping, we kept running water and flushing it back to the pumps, using the big giant pumps as a camel with a lot more power. And that's as far as we get cleaned out. That's the only reason why I know the first fifty to sixty foot. And that's just an estimate, because we had our quick view camera and they're looking into it. That's only an estimate, it's fifty, sixty foot. It could be the whole run like that or it could end right there and there could be a rock right in the middle of the pipe that we can't get through.
We have a lot of unknowns.
I, I don't have, without that television and the pipe being clean, I can't tell you what's wrong with the pipe. All I know is I know I have four failures or four points I can't get anything through to clean.
So that's what a company such as KP will help us?
Our idea is get down, get beyond the blockage, if we have to break the top of the pipe open and then see if we can get past the blockage and what we can see. If it's totally blocked, then we're gonna have to replace the whole pipe. If it's just that area, we'll have to break out that section, pull all the debris out and put a new section of pipe in.
And when we were moving the pipes last week, when we shut off the pumps to move them, we did start backing up the system. So, I mean, shutting off the bypass pumps until we can get flow through there is not an option. I mean, we're, we're between a rock and a hard spot. I mean, we've.
Two thousand six.
We've tried doing everything we can to try to get through it and now we're at that point of, how do you move forward?
How often, Alex's question is how often should you have cleaned the pipe?
We should be on a ten-year rotation for all our major interceptor lines. We're getting that way with the riverside. Once that's done, we're gonna roll.
I know we're working on a program now. I'm just, why, how did it get this bad? You know what I mean? That's what I'm at.
We have no idea.
I have no idea.
This is, we're, we're pulling out blankets.
All we know is we're cleaning and we're gonna keep moving forward with maintenance.
Soil erosion fence thing.
Down the road.
All types of stuff's getting pulled out of this. I don't know how it's gotten in the sewer system.
We found the same material over on riverside, it's like erosion mat. And I don't know how it's getting in our system. I thought it was isolated to the riverside, but we're pulling the exact same material out of Floyd, which does not connect at all whatsoever. So. So how, we're getting some weird material down in our sanitary sewers and I don't know how it's getting in there.
So the three of you are comfortable that once they get down there, determine what the problem is, that we would have time without an adverse impact of getting back to council and the mayor as to what that?
The other day, the day we, you have an idea.
What the solution would be? So when you get down and let's just say we find that place, it's fifty feet and, and, uh, you've got the pipe on hand, you bought some.
Right there.
And so you're going to send, who's men down to that? Because he's never done a pipe job before. So whose men are you sending in that hole?
He ha, he has done pipe jobs before, for the city.
Where?
Uh, well, we just had him do a inlet repairs.
That, that's not even close to this. I mean, he's cut pipe out, that's a big deal. What, what size line is this?
Thirty-six inch.
Thirty-six inch, that's a big deal to cut a thirty-six inch line and make a splice and do all of those things if you've never done it before.
And he's done, he's done up to forty-eight inch sewer.
Well, don't bet your next paycheck on that, pal, because.
I'm just going off what he told me. He told me to my face that they've done forty-eight inch.
Might take that action if you want your paycheck today. I'm just telling you, where has he done that?
I didn't get that information.
Well. Okay, here's my problem. You guys told us five hundred dollars a day for a machine and an operator. That's what I got an email from one of you. Right?
Summary, yep.
Now all of a sudden, we got another machine. Now all of a sudden, we got shoring equipment that's very expensive to rent on a short-term basis, because they gotta haul it in. And so now we don't even know what this is all costing. Who's, I mean. Who's paying for the shoring?
You know, if, if you want to accept Sal's back bid, we can.
No, I, but I want a better understanding of what's going on here, because what, what I've gotten, I asked this question, Robert. It said five hundred dollars a day for a machine and an operator is what we're paying. Now all of a sudden, you're talking about shoring equipment, now all of a sudden, another backhoe. And I don't know who's gonna run the other backhoe. I guess his person run that. But you're talking a lot more money than five hundred dollars a day. And I guess I would like to, it, doesn't that be today, but a better memo of what's really going on here?
That was part of the time and materials. If he needed to rent something for that, that would be.
That was not an email at all. That was never in that email. And, and if he's done all this work, is he a licensed utility worker to begin with?
He does not have a Sioux City Pipe Players license, no.
Then. I'm, I'm just gonna rest my case right there. You wouldn't let anybody else go out there and do that work?
Penrose is doing our, our Western Hills Water Maintenance License Utility Contract, or Pipe Players License either.
Why? That's your job, it's not mine. That's your job to make sure they are. Penrose done worked in the city before, you told me they're not licensed?
They are not licensed.
Then why are we letting them?
Our utility guys aren't licensed.
Well, that's a little bit of difference there, we train our guys. Why do, why, then why would anybody become a licensed utility? Why would we make them take the test?
Well, I, I...
If an out-of-town guy can come in without a license?
I, I mean, I think we should be like Des Moines, our, our, our work should be exempt, like theirs is.
Maybe ours should be, but why would you?
No, they're all, any, any jobs in Des Moines that are bid are exempt from their Pipe Players license.
Why? Why would we wanna do that? Wouldn't, doesn't...
Because it's, it's just an impediment to getting contractors to bid work.
Or a stimulant of getting them to get licensed.
Or maybe it's a good deal, because we know they took a test, which I think maybe you don't see as important, but if you don't think an engineer has to take a test is important, I guess I wonder why we would make contractors. I think it's good to have a licensed electrician to make sure that he's done the proper education and... So I disagree with you on that. And I'm disappointed that we would let a contractor come in this town and not be licensed.
But we hadn't, we had no other choice, no, no other contractor was willing to give us a price, we asked them all.
I'm not talking this job, I'm talking, you said Penrose.
Yeah, Penrose, yeah.
But I don't care, it doesn't matter, it doesn't, that doesn't... There are at least forty-two red flags so far on this deal, so I, somebody make a motion.
Well, if, I number seven, item seven, you're, I'll make a motion, we defer item seven to, uh, June tenth.
Second. To at least be able to see what's going on.
Well, no, we haven't gotten, we still have to do the KP, item thirty-seven, that, that's been added to the agenda. We still have to do that item. I'm just talking about what I don't want...
This is being deferred so that we can gather more information.
Right, I just don't wanna reject...
You can just throw it out, because they already bought a bunch of pipe you're gonna be using, so that bid doesn't mean anything anyway. They don't have to, if you award, you award that to them in a week, you know what? They don't have to say they're gonna use your pipe. They don't. So... Well, but then we're starting all over. Once you know what it is, you could bid it as an emergency project, then they'd have, by then, they'd have soil borings, and by then, they'd have a, yeah, what you're actually bidding, that's the problem. They didn't have any of that before.
That's why I tried to clean it, begin with.
No, but the problem, Mayor, I think you're raising, is you, you don't know what the cost will be. See if there's a problem.
It has nothing to do with this. I'm just saying, they bought two hundred and forty feet of pipe. Well, they award this job, you're stuck with two hundred and forty feet of pipe, because the contractor does not have to buy that pipe from them. If he has a better price, he's not gonna buy that pipe from the city. Why would he? I wouldn't, and you can't force him to under this contract.
But I'm going to the proposed KP. That sounds broad, so... Yeah, but this, you... I, no, no...
You got a motion, is there a second to his motion?
There was.
He's second.
I did, yeah, but I'm having discussion now, because, because June fourteenth, this bid goes away. Is that right, did I understand that right?
I took...
And if we, if we would, if we happen to approve the KP contract, will that be done before June fourteenth?
We don't know. I mean, we, we, we don't know.
I mean, I don't think he's gonna...
I'd say probably not.
I don't think he's gonna get on both ends and get that done in less than a week, but maybe, I mean, maybe, maybe he's better than I think, but, well, I don't...
Sioux City Engineering, to the extent that they legally can, has expressed a willingness to hold their bid till at least June seventeenth.
That's good.
I'm gonna support the deferral then.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Would it be possible, I'm, I, I know this... But we've had city workers out there and building roads and all that, forget all that, I don't care, that's behind us, that doesn't matter. But, starting when we gave a contract here, tell, it would be nice to have a weekly update of what we're into with this project.
Cost-wise?
Cost-wise. And the million three may look really good when we're done. Eight's a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Limbloom Services. Number nine are actions relating to street closure. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area on July fifth for the big parade. B is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Larson Park Road on July fifth for the big parade fireworks display. Ten are actions relating to loan notes and bonds. A is a resolution approving a loan and disbursement agreement with IFA and authorizing issuance of six million, five hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of WADA revenue capital loan notes. B is a resolution approving an amendment to the loan and disbursement agreement with the IFA and authorizing the re-issuance of outstanding amount of thirty-eight million, six hundred thousand sewer revenue capital loan notes. C is a resolution authorizing the issuance of ten million, five hundred and sixty thousand worth of GO bond series two thousand nineteen A. D is a resolution authorizing the issuance of eleven million, five hundred and sixty thousand technical GO bond series two thousand nineteen B. E is a resolution authorizing the issuance of three million, one hundred and five thousand GO bond urban renewal bond series two thousand nineteen C. Eleven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a reimbursement agreement with Mid-America Energy for the Western Hills to Indian Hills Pressure Zone and Tank Demolition Project. B is a resolution approving change order number one to the agreement with Nysomer Electric for upgrades at the Riverside Family Aquatic Center. C is a resolution approving a contract with KP Construction for the Emergency Northern Valley Sanitary Interceptor Point Repair Project. I'd like to separate roll call on that, please. And I want, um, I wanna know where he's put in forty-eight inch pipe and if it's really sewer pipe.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye. Twelve are actions relating to personnel. A is the resolution amending the salary schedule for Pat's employees by reassigning the pay range of the budget manager position. A motion is needed to amend the item to say the resolution amending the position classification manual adopted by resolution ninety-one T ninety-nine seventy-two in the salary schedule by reassigning the position title and job description to budget manager class code twelve eighty-one to pay range S twenty-one. And we knew all this in the budget process?
Yes. Yes.
But the others are all part of your negotiations?
Correct.
So I'm, I'll move that amendment?
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters? Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
B is a resolution approving a personnel manual and salary schedule for Pat's employees. C is a resolution approving a personnel manual and salary schedule for police supervisory employees. Tell me again why they're getting a little extra because of the uniform change?
This was the justification.
I understand that, but I don't know, yeah, she's already get a uniform allowance. What's the, what's changed here is Bertrand?
I could, I could address for police supervisors. Um, uh, Chief Mueller has required them to purchase dress blues to wear at ceremonial events, and this is to help offset that cost.
Now, now you could argue that they didn't ask us if it was okay, that policy, but they want us to pay for it.
So, but they're basically getting the same as the fire, so how is that? Because they get, they get a, a uniform allowance even if they're wearing a suit. Correct?
I don't...
Could you repeat the question?
They get a uniform allowance even if they're wearing a suit?
Yes.
So, why would the fire get this exact same? Because they didn't get their uniform requirement changed, but yet their pay is the exact same. Because I read that. Think that we put that in there to make it sound better, but I don't think it really, the argument holds any weight, but I'm not, after that fiasco out there in Northbrook, I'm...
I've got till eight o'clock. Doing just fine. How much does that amount to?
I didn't hear what you said.
How much does that amount?
The police?
Yeah.
One fifty.
I believe it applies to, is that...
Dress blouse.
How many employee?
Command, um, three, per ex, three captains and...
Six lieutenants?
Six, I believe, six lieutenants.
Yeah. About ten.
They all had those dress uniforms when they took that position, by the way.
No, they didn't have these. These are, were purchased within the last year and a half.
So is this a one-time, or we're gonna do it every year now for them? Because they're certainly not gonna replace them every year.
It's a one-year manual. Can be up for...
It's, a hundred and fifty dollars is annually.
But does that seem fair? That they would get it every year and when they're not going to be buying every year? I know I'm being tough on the police and fire, and lord knows, I don't wanna upset them, but by the same token, I don't, I don't think that's fair. These guys don't get a suit allowance. Yeah, it should be just a one...
It's just a one-year contract.
One-time deal, right? I may not be here, and you guys won't remember that.
It's a, this would be for two years.
Mayor, just text us.
He'll be texting, yeah, he'll be texting.
Police, it's a one-year manual, we can discuss it again next year when we reopen the annual.
But I mean, realistically, it, if it's for the new, uh, dress...
Dress blouse, yeah.
Blouse, it should be just a one-time, should it not? Otherwise, the dress blouse, if they're there for twenty years...
They get twenty new for it.
Just costs you three thousand dollars. And so, are you gonna say that you only get it one year, first year on that position? Because somebody's gonna retire and somebody's gonna get replaced. I just think it's, they get fifteen hundred bucks now, don't they, a year? Isn't that, that's my rec... I, I just have a really difficult time with that. They already get fifteen hundred dollars. They're not spending fifteen hundred dollars a year anymore. I can about guarantee you, because we don't make them anymore, we don't make them turn in receipts. They just get it on their paycheck.
Get fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Just for your uniform.
Correct.
Yes.
Wow.
C is a resolution approving personnel matter and salary schedule for police supervisor employees. I'd like to separate roll call vote on that one.
And this is just for the one year, would be...
Yes.
Waters? Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
No. D is a resolution approving a personnel manual and salary schedule for fire supervisor employees. They did not get this, as I read that, did they get it too?
No.
Are we buying locally?
You don't control that anymore.
Because they don't turn in any receipts.
Because they don't have to turn in receipts anymore.
Oh, back on C for the...
Same.
Well, it's the same, that's just a, an allowance.
They just get a check. Whether they buy a new suit or not, that year they get that check. Thirteen are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution approving change order number two and authorizing payment to INA Construction for the Annual curb and gutter project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Nysomer Electric for the Gordon Drive signal replacement project. C is a resolution approving a tort settlement claim and authorizing fourteen's and purchasing, authorizing, resolution awarding a purchase order to Barclay Asphalt for hot mixed asphalt for field services. Can I ask a question? The potholes don't stay in the ground anymore, is that because the tack is not as good as it used to be? Why is it that they don't stay in for more than six? Some of them have already washed out, we fixed this year. Is there a better tack we can buy to put the, that in the ground?
Ed Pickens, Sioux City Street Superintendent. The tack that we're using now, uh, they changed it a couple of years ago, we think it's actually better than it used to be.
Well, your success on keeping potholes filled is not a witness to that, Ed, I hate to tell you that.
I, I'm right there with you. I mean, it rained twenty-five out of thirty-one days in May, so, but the drier we can get the holes, you know, the better chance that repairs gotta last for a while. We do like the, uh, the way the aqua faults lasting, um, that allows our guys to get out on the rain days and get some of the, what you call it, like axle busters fixed. So, we're always looking for, uh, new ways to patch potholes of...
Have you had the, uh, have you had the Asphalt Institute come to town and talk to them?
Yeah, the Iowa Asphalt Institute, they started having a, uh, a, not a benefit, but like a dinner here once a year, two years ago. They started that, Bill Rousner, Rousner, came to town, and we just talked to him, was that? Three weeks ago, we were talking about coming to town and trying to do, uh, some of this new asphalt, if there's any new, uh, demos they wanna try here, we're all about wanting to try something different.
He didn't have any great recommendations, huh?
Uh, they were gonna set up a time.
Did you talk to him, Gordon, to Darwin?
Yeah, we'll set something up in August.
In August, so Darwin and Bill work together, Darwin's got over thirty years of asphalt experience. So, we're reaching out to these people, um, and then we're asking also what they're doing in Sioux Falls, what they're doing in Omaha, so...
Don't ask them, because that ain't working either.
Yeah, Omaha's, but...
Yeah, I've been in those cities.
Yeah, they're worse than...
Yeah, don't go down there.
They really are. They're worse than us.
Omaha?
No, they're terrible.
They have a lot more money to work with, too.
Yeah.
But they got a lot more streets, too.
They have about five thousand lane miles, and we have about twenty-five hundred.
Well, I'm just curious if there's, I mean, I just, we just don't seem to, they just pop out every year, same ones. I mean, I drive down Grandview Boulevard, and I can about tell you which ones are gonna be, you fixed them, I see this last week, but they're gonna be, they'll be popping again, so...
I, I agree, it's a, you know, and the guys, it's, it's hard on them too, because they're going back the same hole.
Right.
And they don't like doing that either. Uh, is there new technology out there, we're sure, sure wanting to try it.
All right, well, at least you're doing what you can do, I guess, so... All right. B is resolution awarding a purchase order to CW, CDW Government for eleven Panasonic scanners. Fifteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits, see the list, come forward if you have questions. Sixteen are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list, come forward if you have questions. Seventeen, receipt of minutes. See the list and come forward if you have...
Say, on that, I don't know if it's Heidi or who it is, but, um, on seventeen, the, some of the minutes for the Active Transportation Committee, March twentieth were cut off. I don't know if it just wasn't transcribed or if it didn't all get copied and pasted, or how it worked out, but...
Probably me, when putting together the homework, I'll take a look at it. I can email you the full, um, the full information to you if it did get cut off. I'll send it out.
Mayor, would you show me as a, uh, abstaining on fifteen A fifteen, please?
It was just their first meeting, so I think, early in, I just noticed it got cut off, that was why.
Recommendations of planning and zoning, teens are hearing an ordinance vacating an alley at eighteen oh one and seventeen fifty, Highland Avenue.
Did we vote on the consent agenda?
Yep.
Get that Nicole, fifteen A fifteen, okay, thanks.
We're moving along, Michelle, here we go.
All right, sometimes I can do that. All right, um...
Hang on one second, let me get...
Oh, sorry.
The consent agenda, I, it's pass fifteen zero, I'll move eighteen. Second? That's four zero, it said five, but it's four zero, sorry. All right, now, Michelle.
Okay, so, Michelle Boston, I'm the Chair Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, yep, the first item is for the, um, the vacation of the east-west alleyway, um, of eighteen oh one West Highland Avenue. And the recommendation, um, from the Planning and Zoning Commission was to go ahead and approve this item. There was not any, uh, people at the meeting that spoke in opposition or in favor, the, the, um, petitioner was there and, and had a, we feel like a valid argument to, to go ahead and vacate that property.
The hearing's now open, would anybody like to speak on this item? Hearing's now open, would anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing none, the hearing...
And was this the one where staff was recommending denial, though, or how was that?
No.
Nope, not at this.
This one?
I think that there was some question at first, because the alley is kind of split. There is one section that, that wasn't recorded, that was vacated, but it was. So there was kind of a east side and a west side, if that makes sense.
You love your job, don't you?
We have lots of fun.
Passes four zero, four to zero. Does anybody have an objection to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'm...
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Second, third?
Second.
Passes four zero. Number nineteen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning thirty-seven seventeen Summit Street. Petitioners Flux Dance Company, P and Z recommends rezoning to suburban commercial. I'll move that. Second.
Yep, this one actually came to us with a rezoning request of general commercial and the Planning and Zoning Commission thought a better zoning would be actually suburban commercial for that property. That adds a bit of more restrictive use. While we were supportive of the dance studio, we do feel like in the future, if that property became available, sold, whatnot, trying to just kind of think of what type of uses we would want in, under general commercial versus suburban commercial, and felt that suburban commercial would fit that area better. The petitioner was present at the meeting and we spoke and it, I think she's in the audience tonight, but she was agreed with that as well.
You guys have a concern about parking for this facility?
Um, you know what, I, I don't believe that parking really came up as an issue when we were discussing it. You know, we weren't looking at a site plan, you know, we were just looking at the zoning, so maybe that was why. If a site plan comes before us, we'd be looking at parking.
Will a site plan have to come before you? Oh, will it, will it?
I think it's just if, uh, maybe. It can.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. The rear of this property, the majority of it, lies within the Perry Creek floodway. And so therefore, meeting the building setbacks on the rear of the property are going to be difficult. And so, we've discussed with the petitioner that we will be coming forward and working with them on a site plan that will need to go to Planning and Zoning Commission because some of those setbacks will have to be waived because of that floodplain. The building's going to have to be pushed up towards the front of the site, but they can use the rear of that and the floodplain for parking. So we expect to get all their parking in that flood area.
No, I just, I went to their, go ahead.
The building will have to be up on the north end, or north edge, is that what you...
Uh, northeast, more easterly.
If I went to their titles, or whatever you call, they're a pretty big organization, so I just make sure that they have enough parking around there.
We'll have to review the parking numbers based on the square footage of the building as well, so...
Neighbor did the Yaleman's job on the dance floor, you missed...
I, I did hear about that.
I have video in case you want to see it later.
Video evidence.
The hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak on the item?
I would think, too, maybe the different classes, not everyone would be there at once.
No, they're not, they're like Tuesday night, yeah, they're not every night. Hearing is now closed. We're doing the suburban commercial. Passes four zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore? Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Second. Passes four zero, twenty's a hearing and ordinance vacating the alley at one sixteen South Center Street. Petitioners Christina Boyle, P and Z recommends denial, I'll move that. Second.
Okay, the Planning and Zoning did recommend denial of this vacation of the alleyway. There, really, the hangup that we had is that the property located at seven hundred West First Street would be, there would be no access to that property if it was vacated. There are concerns, I think, right now with the neighbors and the parking situation that's going on in the alleyway. I think there's some muscle, a neighbor came and presented who was opposed to the vacation. But when all came down to it, we just really got stuck on that, that property having no other access to it. And how can you resell that property? How can emergency services access that property? And so that's why we recommended denial.
Anyone to be heard, the hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is now closed. You will vote no if you want to vote with the planning and zoning's recommendation.
Correct.
It fails, four to zero. Twenty-one's a resolution approving the final plat A minor subdivision of Maria Salisbury Addition property at thirty-two, two seventy-one K twenty-two. The petitioner's Al Fagan, P and Z recommends approval, I'll move that. Second.
Yep, the Planning and Zoning did recommend approval. We didn't really have much for comments or public input and, uh, not much to report on this one.
Oops, you gotta do the hearing, don't you? Oh, don't you? Oh, no, resolution, sorry. I like when you do the hearing part, you open it and you close it. Four, passes four zero twenty-two is a resolution approving a final plat of Burtzinger Addition, property at forty-four twenty Hamilton Boulevard. Petitioners Nick and Brittany Norbert, P and Z recommends approval, I'll move it. Second.
Yep, the same with this one, we recommend approval. We didn't have too much of a discussion. I think there was just some, a little bit of discussion about access on Hamilton Boulevard and how that's going to work, but...
This one looks like a big flag lot.
Right.
But they own the flagpole.
Right, that's correct, mhm.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Twenty-three's a hearing resolution withdrawing the three hundred dollars, oh, I'm sorry, that passes four zero. Twenty-three, hearing resolution withdrawing the three hundred dollar civil penalty against Tobacco Hut, number eleven forty-five twenty-three Morningside Avenue for violation of cigarette laws. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's open, anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zero, twenty-four's a hearing resolution assessing a fifteen hundred dollar civil penalty or suspension of thirty days against Everotus Igualia, uh, ten oh one Court Street for violation of cigarette law. Move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open, anyone want to be heard?
Can, may I ask a question? It says, of course, a civil penalty of fifteen hundred dollars or suspension of thirty days. Who makes the decision? Do they?
They do.
They do, if they don't...
But they never reply.
Right, if they don't pay the amount that's been assessed, then we'll go and we'll take their license for...
For thirty days, so, okay.
Got it.
But I wondered as if they paid their first fine, you know what I mean? I wondered.
On the previous...
This is the second, yeah, on the previous violation. I wondered if they ever...
They did pay.
They did? They did?
Hearing's open, anyone want to be heard? I tell you what, these bother me when they get these kind of penalties. I don't think there's any excuse for that. I don't think the...
Agreed.
...stiff enough, but. Hearing's now closed.
Is this the second violation, is that what I saw?
Yes, I believe the first violation was in January of this year.
Do they get three violations or four before they withdraw their permit?
There's more on cigarettes, I think.
I think maybe four.
I think it's four.
Passes four zero, twenty-five is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Heritage Parking Ramp Repair Project, I'll move that. Second. Hearing's open, anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. You like that, how we do that?
I do.
You like that?
It's very legal.
That's why they want to take their time.
Passes four zero, for thirty years, we didn't do it this way, but by golly, we're doing it right. Twenty-six is a hearing and resolution approving this plans and specs for taxiway C South Reconstruction Project. I'll move it. Second. Hearing is now open, anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. If you wanted to add a little touch, but you could pound the gavel each time. We're just good right there. Thought I had three minutes on each item. Passes four to zero, twenty-seven's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of the Warrior Hotel, the LP, for land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal area and authorizing a second amendment to the development agreement, I'll move it. Second. The hearing is now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. After abstaining, conflict of interest? You know how much more paper we go through when they have to print all that stuff, too?
Something tells me Dan and Pete aren't really worried about the paperwork side of it.
Passes three to zero to one, Mr. Moore abstained. Twenty-eight's a hearing and resolution approving the sale of the property at three thousand one thirteen Street. Petitioners William Vanderveen, I'll move it. Second. Hearing is now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zero, twenty-nine's a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property at four eleven Burton Street. Petitioners Billy Jonathan Garcia Perez, I'll move it. Second. Hearing is now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zero, thirty's a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property at four fifty-one Burton Street. Petitioners Majessa and Terrence Hargreaves, I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open, would anybody like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zero, thirty-one's a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property at nineteen forty-five Ruby Street. Don Guston, I'll move it. Second. Hearing is now, uh, open, anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zero, thirty-two's a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property at fifteen hundred South Cleveland Street. Petitioners Richard Merle, I'll move it. Second. Hearing is now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Thirty-three is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Lindblum Services for land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area deferred from May thirteenth and twentieth. Motion requests to delete this item, I'll move that, but wonder, but I asked a question. What is the difference between this and item number eight? Opening the bed, I mean, opening, hearing again.
There was the error in the legal description, the survey, um, there was a closure error in the legal and so, we're reinitiating the thirty-day time period and deleting off the other item. We have to renotice it unfortunately because it was, the property description was shifted and did not close. And that was just discovered.
Sure, Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. As Nicole stated, uh, local survey company was hired to prepare the legal description for the deed. Last week, we sent the abstract over to have it updated as part of our responsibility to the development agreement and the abstracter found the error in the legal description that was provided to city staff. And it was a significant enough error that we have to start over.
Hey, then I have a question. Won't be in my lifetime they rebuild that viaduct, but it could happen. Are we making sure now, because we didn't on Sioux City brick and tile, are we making sure that we're out of that, any proposed right of way that'll be needed for that?
I think at this time, it's unknown. We're keeping Grand Avenue, which is city right of way underneath of Gordon Drive Viaduct. But if the viaduct were to shift in any direction, at this time, I wouldn't know how much right of way the DOT would need. They have not shared any of those...
But you're not selling that, at least, because we did...
We're not selling Grand Avenue.
We did sell some old right of way with Sioux City brick and tile, right?
Uh, that was some north-south, an alley, I believe, on the north-south alleyway on the east side, close to the channel. Or, excuse me, close to the railroad tracks.
Second, the motion. Do you have to do a roll call on that one, or because of...
No, it is voted here.
Sorry, Dan?
I built it in.
Oh, you built it in, thank you. Passes four zero, thirty-four's an ordinance amending chapter twenty point zero four of the municipal code by casing permit residential commercial buildings, I'll move that. Second. Run this by the home builders?
I run it by the Home Builders Association, the Sioux City Construction League and the Building and Housing Code Board, and they all voted unanimously to support this action.
And what does that do, put us in line with other neighboring communities?
We are ver, we're close, we're not over. Actually, we're still under in some surrounding communities, but it makes us competitive.
Find surrounding communities for me?
In the residential permit area, we surveyed Sioux Falls, Council Bluffs, Ames, South Sioux City, Dakota Dunes, and then also compared it to ourselves, Sioux City. It went anywhere from a low, which was Sioux City, or, excuse me, South Sioux City at six hundred dollars. Sioux City was at six thirty-five and up to a high of sixteen hundred dollars on those residential fees for a single-family dwelling. The variable there is Sioux City's is a flat fee, depending, doesn't matter the size of the dwelling structure, as long as it's a single-family structure. Other communities go up and down depending on the square footage sizes. So we stayed with a two thousand, with basically a two thousand square foot house with an eight hundred and fifty square foot garage, so that we kept it uniform across the board with the rest of the communities and, and used those numbers to get there. So, again, we, our proposal for that single-family fee goes from six thirty-five to seven hundred dollars. That's been over twenty years since that's been adjusted. If you look at the commercial side, we looked at Sioux Falls, Council Bluffs, Ames and Sioux City. We were by far lower, sometimes by five, six hundred percent lower than other communities. So we had to vary, depending on the type of occupancy for that commercial structure, we varied the, the amount of increase based on how, where we stood in comparison to other communities around the area.
When was the most recent fee increase?
For the residential side, it's been over twenty years. For the commercial side, it's been approximately seven years, it was two thousand and twelve, I took those through.
Passes three to one, I didn't vote for it, I just, I don't think, I think things are slowing up and now it's not the time to do this. Pretty, so we'll have to bring it back. Thirty-five's a resolution adopting filling of hazardous material incidents and rescinding resolution two thousand eighteen to zero four one five. So we're not charging for that anymore? I, I'm totally confused on this and I should have asked for clarification. We're not charging for this anymore? Hazardous on car wrecks and that?
We're not charging for this anymore, hazardous on car wrecks and that?
Our case up fire, Marshall? No, it will, it will just be charged under the other portion, dealing with hazardous materials, and basically, the only differentiation was who the bill went to originally. This was giving us the ability to attempt to charge the contractor that hit the line, that of who was in control of the, uh, gas at the time, because it, it's actually controlled by Mid-America while it's still in that pipe. The state code only gives us the ability to bill who's in control of the material, so the bill would now have to go to Mid-America instead of that contractor.
You think they're going to pay that if a contractor hits a gas line?
No.
Did not bill the contract?
There was several, uh, there was a lot of discussion regarding this, you know, prior to, and then once it was, uh, put in place. At this time, kind of consulting with legal, it would, they just felt it was probably the best thing to do is just resend this and then look at it at a later date.
So now if I go out tonight and get my little backhoe out and dig into the gas line? Mid-America can charge me obviously to fix it because I didn't ask for a locate, but you're not going to charge me to come out and monitor the neighborhood?
This section was actually never applicable, once it, uh, got on your own property, I believe. This was only for things that were offsite, offsite. If you, you know, if you were putting in a tree in your own yard and hit it, a domestic service line, just due to the size and the small response that we have for those.
I know, but if I hit a, if I hit a gas line, a main one going through my right of way, which there is one? There's a, there's a high, there's got to be a high-pressure line that serves, that ties between leads in my neighborhood.
Yeah, as far as, could we legally know? By this, the state code only gives us the ability, once we resend this, to, we can only charge the person that was in, basically in, in charge of the product at that point.
And you're not going to bill Mid-America when I hit that line?
Could attempt to, but you're correct.
You're telling me the state code does not allow us to?
The way, the way we understand it, no.
Well, either it is or it isn't.
Well, I'm saying, no.
What is?
It says the, the person that's under, that, who's, who's control that product is under, so if it's at a facility, it's the facility. Once you put it on a truck and it leaves the facility, it's the truck. So because it's in a pipeline, um, that's still their pipeline, if that makes sense.
So this is only for pipelines?
Correct. That was the, that, this was very specific, um, in an attempt to try to recoup some of the costs with these types of responses. And as you'll see, it was basically a mimic of an, of the other portion of this, there, it was A and B, um, B was.
But Mid-America will definitely want us in that neighborhood if, if a name.
Correct. And we're not alone in this, there's other communities that have, have tried this, this exact same thing, so.
Okay.
I need a motion in a second.
I'll move it.
Second.
That should be something we've worked on with the state legislature, that's just totally unacceptable. But then we have utility workers out here, don't have licenses, so what's the difference? Anyway, passes three to one, let it go today. Thirty-six is a resolution approving a service provider agreement with Mercino for the emergency Northern Valley sanitary intercept and point repair project.
And we did receive the service provider agreement today. Uh, there has been a change. Our, I guess our normal form that we use, we had asked for a not to exceed amount, that was stricken, uh, by Mercino. So the resolution, the resolution itself would have to be amended. Because it did remove the not to exceed, it's strictly. Charge, which is included on the front page of the agreement.
Is there an amendment to the agreement?
Right, I mean, do we have more worries about? Huh?
Check.
I was going to say, do we have worries about this as well?
Yeah.
That's really steep every day, and then we just received it today.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I, I don't know, I guess, it just, an explanation of this.
Councilmember Waters, yes, we do have concerns because we struggled to find bypass pumps. Mercino is the only one that could provide those bis- bypass pumps, and they are needed to route the sewer around the, uh.
That point.
Current damage line.
You struggled at that particular point in time because of all the flooding.
Correct.
You don't know what that could be today.
And that's why we're currently, I'm working with engineering on sending out contracts, well, getting bids for a contract for pumping, so we never in this boat again. Because like, the other day when they used our, they used the rented excavator, they never had permission to use that. In fact, we had to go out there today and re-clean it up. So if I have an option, we won't be going through the same company ever again, but right now, we don't.
Now, the agreement.
Pumps off.
Um, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, the agreement can be terminated with not less than seven days of written notice, um, to either party, so that is the out. But however, we'll have to stay on top of whatever fees would be accumulating, because it is open.
We have an estimate of how many days this will be?
Again, we, we don't know what's wrong out there, so we've, we've got to start digging to find out what we have.
How much have we spent so far?
I don't have.
Month and a half, John?
It's been a month and a half?
Month and a half of pumping and the rocks, I bet you, I don't know what the pumping would be forty-one hundred dollars a day, but I don't know what their mobilization was.
How much is it a day?
Forty-one hundred?
You've got over two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Seventeen ninety-five a week. Telehandler? Seventeen ninety-five a week for the telehandler?
For Donald though.
Saying that right for?
For that handler, yeah. That was just to move the pumps around.
Right.
Uh, uh, doing the math, it all comes out to about forty-one hundred dollars a day. At this point, so much for the mobilization to get onsite, do piping.
That's a ten thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. No, that's demobilization.
Right.
I see what you're saying.
More than forty-one hundred dollars a day, what, because it's, it's forty-one hundred dollars a day plus just for the pump rental and the watch.
Correct. The mobilization is just, you're going to mob and a demo, you're going to pay that, so that's.
The one time.
You can't divide that into the number of days, because you don't know what the number of days.
No, that's right, but it's forty-one hundred without mobilization and demobilization, is what I'm saying. I figured in there.
But you're also saying then that our hands are kind of tied, we have to do this, but we're hoping to do it differently going forward, pretty much.
I want to have contracts in place, so when something like this happens, we have bids out there, so we don't have to scramble like we. Thirty-six inch sanitary issue are back.
Yeah, this is not something that happens every day, and it's hard to prepare for an emergency for this sort of situation. So thirty-six inch line, just don't normally go down.
Don't plug up like this. Smaller lines plug up, these bigger lines don't usually plug up. Lot of debris can go through a thirty-six inch line before it plugs.
I'll move that the contract be stricken at the five hundred thousand dollars, because we're already halfway there. With no one in sight. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it because we have the seven day, I don't know if we'd exercise it, we do have the seven day termination clause.
Call the rule on the amendment, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott? Waters? Greddken?
Aye.
Regular motion.
Vote electronically?
I, assuming that you. Can't find somebody else to bid it now that things are.
Oh, it's just a lot more money if we bid it now at this point, because they'd have, we still have their mobile, demobilization, then we'd have another pump company's mobilization. There is another pump company, we could bid it.
You don't know, I mean, you could bid it, what's the worst case? You got these guys, and you give them seven notices to get out of here.
Uh, that is possible, but we're, at this point, we're out of space too. Not like we have room to put another pump there, it'd be, it would be, it could be done, but it'd be difficult.
Well, but they came in and, and you were having issues, they came in, it wasn't flowing anyway, so by the time they, de- de- demobilized and another guy came right behind them and set up. We've had that before, you just, you've got to hurry up and bypass, I mean, they, there's not a lot of time, I understand, but that line wasn't running.
Actually, it was.
It was at first, until we started trying to ram, trying to get a jet line through to be able to clean it. That's when the blockages really started to happen, and that, that, no matter what you do, you run that risk when you start cleaning that large of sewer line with the jet head of that happening. Because the material starts falling in if there's a void on top. You could, if it's a broken pipe, you re-shift it, and now you just made a larger dam inside of the pipe, there's a lot of issues that can happen within it. But I do, but I do agree that if we do re, we could go get prices. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to look. I don't think they come in cheap.
Well, you need to know what, you need to know what it is anyway. If you say you're going to bid this in the future, just bid it and see what it is.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Mark Simmons, Utility Director, we could look at, at prices and availability. I think availability is a, still an issue with all flooding going on.
That's why bidding it like he's saying isn't going to make one bit of difference, because it, you, you're going to get a price from somebody, but if they don't have equipment, they're going to tell you, sorry, I don't have equipment, what are you going to do to them?
And we're looking at, sort of, at having a first and secondary, so that way, if something like that were to happen, we'd have another available to go to.
Preferably from different locations.
Yes.
A lot, a lot of stuff's down in Omaha, and it's, that's already occupied because of the flooding there, so it'd be nice to get something from Minneapolis or something like that.
These companies are very spread out.
So you'd be open to at least trying that and trying to get those bids?
We're actually working on a meeting, we have a meeting on Wednesday that we're moving forward with trying to get bids for stuff. So when we come into situations like this, we already have.
When are they going to start digging out there, guys? I mean, what's, what's the hang up on digging?
I got a pre-con meeting with the, with KP tomorrow.
How are they?
We hired them ten days ago. Well, I think we did, if you check, when you sent me the email, it said five hundred dollars a day, I bet that was almost ten days ago.
We just getting the contracts signed, what was it, Friday or something like that? We were just getting them signed la- late last week.
And Mayor and Council, just to point a clarification, that maybe you already know this or understand this, I was gone last week, but, um, Mercino was originally a, and it still is technically, a subcontractor of InfraTrak. We have not hired them at this point. This will.
The agreement tonight is directly with them.
Right.
That transfers everything over to us.
So do we want to approve this and then have the seven days to get out of it while you put it out to bid, or we deny, so you can put it out to bid?
You've got.
No, what we're putting out to bid is for future, future items.
Got you.
Future problem.
The amount of pipe that they have to fuse together, it takes them three or four days. It was almost a week and a half of them fusing pipe to get where we're at today.
How often are we, is the city going to be billed from them? We're, that's in section eight, but I'm not seeing, are they billing monthly? Are they billing weekly?
Typically, we like to see it monthly, monthly billings or those sort of things, but I don't know what the contract says.
Contract calls for the provider to submit monthly statements, so.
Uh, section eight payments to the service provider, eight point three. Eight point five? Oh, eight point three. I might have a new pair of legal. He's not in the mood. Thanks, Pete.
Not today.
So monthly. Are we voting?
Yeah.
I'm still waiting on a motion in a second on this one.
I thought I moved it, I'll move it. Second, I thought I seconded.
On the amendment, we had a first and a second amendment. Yes, you can vote electronically.
You need a motion on the main, as amended? That's, that's what I thought, okay. Thank you.
Passes four zero, two thousand nineteen quarterly financial report for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Mayor and Council, Teresa Fitch, the Budget Manager, and I will give you the quarterly report, financial reports for the third quarter. Get short, I promise. You've been here long. Um, just a few things to notice here, um, in the sewer utility, we do have a receivable for about three million dollars that we are unsure the collectability of, so. Also, the Redflex cameras, um, we do not program that, but at this point, we've had two point five million dollars in revenue this year.
That's good, because I don't think you're getting the three million dollars on the other side, so that's good to hear.
I think you're right. On the expenditures, um, the personnel services, they are as expected, the fifty-eight percent, um, the thirteen percent in the miscellaneous, um, includes the, um, the Spectra and Kinzeth payments. And within the Kinzeth payment also includes the reconciliation payment for FY eighteen as well. You'll see that here as well. It, and the, um, events facilities, uh, the third quarter actual is significantly higher than budgeted, and that's, um, due to the reconciliation payment from eighteen being paid in nineteen.
What do you mean by that?
The payment, the last payment of the, um, for, uh, Spectra, to reconcile the eighteen for the amounts of subsidy owed to them, was paid in nineteen.
Oh, because they underperformed.
Um, the, also parks and recreation, it appears that their actual is significantly below, um, below their budget, but that will, um, even out, um, because of their seasonal staff. So with their pools coming on and, um, all the parks people, that will even out that expenditure. Also, in utilities, um, their actual is significantly less than what's budgeted, um, and that's due to, um, the delay in the biogas and those expenses. So, um, I did talk to Mark today, and they're anticipating, um, revenue and expenses, um, for that to be, um, all online February of FY twenty, so. Um, for the investments, we are about a half a percent higher than we were last year, um, for the yield, so that's good. Um, they were one point zero eight percent last year, one point seven two percent this year. And the EMS division, um, right now, they have, um, as of March thirty-first, they do have a deficit of about four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. They do have a receivable of about a million dollars, and currently, they're collecting about forty-two percent on their receivables. They, with LifeQuest, LifeQuest has estimated that it'll be forty percent, we are about two percent above, so hopefully, we do collect the four, the, um, it should be about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on that million dollars. Again, we do have three full months left, but.
Explain that better.
I'm sorry.
Um, we have a receivable, or we have, um, so we have a million dollars, still waiting to be, well, I mean, it's still with.
You collect forty-eight percent of?
Um, forty-two percent is what we're, that's the estimated amount of what we currently are collecting.
Four hundred and twenty thousand, and their deficit right now is how much?
Four hundred and eighty-three thousand.
So I'm supposed to sit here today and believe that they're only gonna lose sixty-three thousand this year?
No, because there's still three months more to bill.
Yeah, so I'm, I can't be certain.
So? I mean, when you put the financial statement together the way you're supposed to, which you will with, with your CPAs, and that, that'll do gap and they'll recognize, they know now, they have a history, so they're gonna recognize that revenue. But it still won't be that good though, because they recognized revenue a year ago when they did it, which you're not recognizing now.
Right, yep.
Makes it... Somewhat difficult for those of us that have a little bit of understanding to deal with that, because you're giving us cash numbers.
Right. And I do know that they have a new state program that they're working, um, on to try to, um, close that gap with Medicaid, that they'll have, um, they have state, um, funding that they will hopefully get some reimbursements or some, to kind of close that gap, but that's not confirmed as of now. They're working towards that.
Well, it'd be nice to have a, have... Well, we'll get it at the end of the year, but it'd be nice to know what that is on an accrual basis, I guess.
Okay. Do you want me to provide something additional to you, or do you want to wait till the end of the year, or what would you?
Got another thirty, forty days.
You're right.
Here, right?
Right.
We, we have a collection company, correct?
We do. Well...
Not really in a collection company, they're a billing company.
They have a billing company, and then we do have a collection subsequent to that. So once they hit a hundred and twenty days, it will go to Noel Collections, which we have a contract with.
I just don't recall that we were told, or that I was told, or I understood it'd be forty percent. I didn't, that low.
Mm-hmm. And actually, um...
That's reimbursement, or that's collection, right?
Right. Majority of that is because, like, over sixty percent of our billing is either Medicare or Medicaid, and they pay on a flat rate basis. So regardless of what is done within the ambulance, there's a flat race base, flat rate reimbursement.
Pay for in New York City and Chicago's a lot, their flat rate's a lot, a lot higher than ours. That's the best part about living in Iowa.
Mm-hmm. So I do know that Jim is actively working towards trying to at least close that gap for Medicaid, which is a little over twenty percent. But, again, that program isn't, the application isn't out for it, and, um, he has gotten information regarding it, but...
I will have Chief Tom Everett and EMS Director Hayden provide a council memo that outlines what that program in, program is, and if it's successful, what it will mean for revenue for Sioux City.
Well, you gotta establish your high revenue. It's crazy how you have to do it. It's unbelievable.
Right.
But you...
Do you guys have any other questions?
You're not surprised by the forty percent then? I'm in that business, pal. You, and, and don't forget, it takes ninety to a hundred and twenty days to get to forty percent too.
Yep.
If you get it.
The twenty...
With Medicaid, now they fight it.
The twenty percent, that twenty is Medicaid? It's about twenty percent. You establish your rates, and then they, doesn't matter, they pay a bottom out, but the higher you can establish that your true rate is, then they're supposed to bump you, is what he's, I'm sure, working on, but it's difficult to get them to read.
Well, yeah, and I could have, um, Jim provide that, but...
Okay.
Do you have any other additional questions?
They're not getting forty percent on Medicaid.
No, because it's a flat rate, regardless of what's done.
A thousand dollar ambulance ride for Medicaid, we're probably getting two-hundred bucks.
I can't tell, I can't speak for sure, but you're probably right.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, any additional questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Citizen Concerns. Council?
I have none.
Yeah. Something about Citizens Academy tomorrow, graduation, isn't it?
I've got a ton of things going.
Seven o'clock at the Sioux City Public Museum?
I was gonna say, I know I'm gonna miss some, so you should, you can mention that one. Um, tonight going on right now, if everyone's available, to head over to Launchpad, they're having that ribbon cutting, um, and introducing the new executive director. Uh, let's see, tomorrow, Dan is gonna cover. Wednesday, pretty excited.
Go ahead and cover it.
That's fine. Well, yeah, tomorrow is going to be the, uh, graduation ceremony for the Citizens Academy, takes place at the Convention Center, right?
The museum.
Museum?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Yeah, that's exciting. Go and support them.
Yeah, that's right.
On Wednesday, um, on Wednesday, there's actually going to be a couple people here in town, the Iowa Great Places. Uh, we are, we are up to be redesignated as an Iowa Great Place, and so those individuals will be here kind of assessing our need and just touring the community. So I know Dan and myself will be there, um, representing the council, and then there's also another site visit, I forget the acronym, um, what it stands for, but it's basically with Sulan District Health. They were working on, like, those wheelchair plugins and overall accessibility at the different parks. They'll be here as well with that site visit. And, let's see, uh, actually, on Thursday, an event that I appreciate every year is, uh, at the Sioux City Art Center, Sculpt Sulan is announcing their new sculptures. Mayor, you can't make it?
When is it? I think I got a funeral that day.
Yeah. Thursday at five PM at the Art Center showcases the new sculptures that are gonna be going in downtown, um, as well as auctioning off or selling some of the, some mini sculptures. Uh, and then this weekend...
I forgot to invite me to that one again, as you...
I'll make Pete get an invite. Uh, Friday is actually the Leeds Parade, and so we'll be there as well as...
Who's going to that?
I am.
I was kind of planning on it, hoping to, because I missed the last one.
Pete?
No.
Six o'clock is the...
So it's just you and I in the car?
Ronda probably.
Unless you wanna throw me in.
You gonna ride in the car?
Oh, I'm kidding.
It seemed like we did last time with the candy.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out which car.
Okay, okay.
Um, in addition to the...
Why don't you give them a car each?
I bring my own.
Drive my cars? No, that's not happening.
Additionally, on, uh, Friday is actually Sneaky's fortieth celebration, up at Celebration Farms. I'm looking forward to that.
Friday.
So yeah, it starts, I believe, at six PM up at Celebration.
Friday, or sorry?
Friday.
Friday.
So I'll probably head there right after the parade.
Goes to eleven PM.
Something like that, yeah. They have bands, free will donation.
What's Celebration?
Okay. So yeah, that's taking place on Friday as well. Sneaky's been here for forty years. They're, that's, that's a big part of our community. And then, uh, this weekend is Awesome Biker Nights, so... And I should go through next week as well, because I'll be gone. I'm just kidding.
Read this one. You're gone next week?
Yeah.
I'm gone next week?
You're gonna be loaded.
Ronda could be gone next week? Wait a minute, you're gone next week? I'm gonna declare a snow emergency. I'm in charge.
Annual meeting, Wednesday, June twelfth, again, the week that...
Check with Ronda, Bob. In worst cases, I'll drive back. I'm only gonna be down by...
I think at this point, Ronda plans on being here next week.
Okay. Art Center Association.
The Art Center Association of Sioux City Annual Meeting. Mayor, you're there. You RSVP'd, that's good.
Wednesday, June twelfth.
I didn't RSVP, because I'm gonna be on the...
The mayor will, mayor will be saying some word, no? That's all I have, mayor. Well, actually, no, I actually have a question.
I was just gonna, I, I checked my, uh, calendar for the Citizens Academy. I had six-thirty to seven-thirty.
That's, six-thirty to seven is the social hour, or half hour, and then a seven...
Oh, okay.
You and I will want to be there at six-thirty, because they have ice cream.
Oh, they, they are having ice cream?
They may, I saw.
Oh.
Very careful about my word selection.
Yes, yes you are.
Ms. Capadmore, I just wanted an update from that email. I know you were calling Mr. Sorvag. He had reached...
Yes, um, I sent out an email. I, I thought I sent out an email to everyone on Thursday. We've reached, uh, successful, agreeable, con...
Oh, I did not receive that.
I already said.
I don't think I did, but...
I'll resend it if it...
On what's app?
On, uh...
I got an email from Mr. Sorvag.
Regarding, uh, a property issue.
I don't think we did, Bob.
You don't think I did?
I don't think.
Okay. I will send one out.
I, I received it. You might have sent it to me, because they called me a long time ago.
Sounds good.
I ran into you, and you told me something you were doing, but I don't think you actually sent an email, Bob.
I was gonna say, I was watching it, just because...
I will, I will send one out.
Thank you. Um...
You were done.
Yeah, I think that's... I think that's all I got, because Dave, you're gonna give me that estimate of what that costs for those corners, because I sent you that picture. That's the type of corner that I'm talking about, where those trucks regularly go over, Leach and South Lewis.
Fix it in-house. We'll have to get a permit, though.
I'm just trying to find those ones that, where trucks are going over them constantly, you're always gonna have problems, like, you might as well pave it, just stop putting dirt there. Yeah, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Dan, you're up.
Okay.
We never approved it, so we can take it back.
Good.
The, um... Thanks for doing all these announcements for me. I had them ready.
I tried to make...
You're gonna have...
There is a band game Saturday night, too. I know he forgets that.
No, the Sioux City Bandits won Saturday night, and I was gonna ask you, the playoff game?
We don't have a playoff yet. We gotta win the rest of them.
What's, who's playing Saturday?
We're playing Saturday night, but that's...
Who you playing?
Omaha and a team called North Texas. But then we go on the road for two games, so it's a long ways playoff shift.
I leave Saturday for my basketball.
I was excited. I thought you were in the playoffs already.
No.
That's all I have.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.